To order, this for consideration a proposed annexation agreement by which certain property would be annexed to the city. The owner of Tempco Electric Heater Corporation has petitioned to annex the property located at 6 N 504 Central Avenue, which is currently in unincorporated DuPage County. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Alderman Catalano?
Here.
Alderman Jacob?
Here.
Alderman Messina?
Here.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Here.
Alderman Sizomarsky?
Here.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Here.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Here.
Alderman Woods?
Here.
Mayor Police.
Here, I declare a quorum present. Let the record reflect that notice of this hearing was duly published in the Daily Herald Newspaper on December 28, 2015. A copy of the published legal notice will be made part of the record as Exhibit A. The property under discussion is legally described in the legal notice attached hereto as Exhibit A. The property bears the common address of 6 N 504 Central Avenue, Wooddale, Illinois. Any individual present tonight who would like to present testimony concerning the proposed annexation agreement and annexation must be first placed under oath. I also ask that you please raise your hand to be called upon to testify. To allow as many people as possible to be heard, your remarks will be limited to five minutes. I will now open the public hearing. Is there anyone wishes to address the audience? Mr. Johnson?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. My name is Kenneth Johnson. In this case, I'm the attorney for Tempco Electric. And Tempco is very proud to be a corporate citizen of the city of Wooddale. And hopefully, Wooddale is proud of Tempco as being the largest employer in your community. We've been very diligent working with city staff. We thank you for their input, but we do not have the agreement finalized at this point. So, we would respectfully ask that you continue it to February 18.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to address the council this evening? Okay. Next, I move, need a motion? To recess the public hearing to February 18 at 7:30 PM. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion. Alderman Eugene Wesley, Alderman Jacob, second. Roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Sizomarsky?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes. The motion is carried. The public hearing is now recessed until February 18 at 7:30 PM. Excuse me. All right, I'd like to call the order. City Council meeting of January 21, 2016. Roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano?
Here.
Alderman Jacob?
Here.
Alderman Messina?
Here.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Here.
Alderman Sizomarsky?
Here.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Here.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Here.
Alderman Woods?
Here.
Mayor Police.
Here, I declare a quorum present. Please stand and join in the pledge of allegiance. And if, Mr. Joe Butis could lead the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Next, they need a motion to approve the city council minutes of January 7, 2016 at 7, 2016. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any questions, comments, corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do any citizens wish to be heard on matters not listed on the agenda this evening? I have no written communiques. Under mayor's report, we've got three items. We'll start with the first one. Mr. Butis, if you could come up to the podium, please. We have a resolution honoring Joe Butis with the honorary Joe Butis Way. Whereas the city of Wooddale is a body politic and corporate, organized, existing, whereas the city of Wooddale wishes to recognize the contributions to the Wooddale community by Joe Butis. And whereas Joe Butis has organized and planned a Memorial Day parade for the community for over 20 years. And whereas Joe Butis has volunteered hundreds of hours to produce annual Memorial Day parade so the community could honor the servicemen and women and celebrate the freedom earned by their sacrifices. And whereas Joe Butis also plans a formal service which takes place after each Memorial Day parade at the Veterans Park in Wooddale. Whereas Joe Butis was involved in the planning and development of Veterans Park in Wooddale. Whereas Joe Butis and the Tioga VFW post 2149 feed hundreds of patrons after both the parade and the memorial service. And whereas Joe Butis is a highly decorated veteran who has given a great sacrifice to this nation to protect our freedom. Whereas Joe Butis entered the service in 1943 and had frequently encountered life-threatening situations during World War II in the course of performing his assignments in the Asiatic Pacific Theater. And whereas Joe Butis has selflessly given decades of contributions to improving the civic pride of the residents and visitors of the city of Wooddale. And whereas the city wishes to recognize the accomplishments and achievements of Joe Butis that will have a long-lasting impact on the landscape of the city for generations to come with the designation of honorary Joe Butis Way on Oakwood Drive in the city of Wooddale. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city of Wooddale, DuPage County, Illinois Municipal Corporation, I do need a motion.
I make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Does anybody wish to make a comment? Or somebody from the audience would like to make a comment before we proceed?
Again.
Joe, would you like to say a few words? Mayor?
Mayor?
Yes. Oh, you do have, Alderman Wesley?
Joe, you have done a marvelous job on doing a parade. Our hats go off for what you have done for this committee. You know, and we have to say, I appreciate all that you have done in the years that you have done for all our parades and everything else that we have asked for. So, thank you from bottom of my heart for what you have done.
And before I let Joe say a few words, we'll present them with the plaque. This is the one that'll go up on the street. We have a commemorative one for you for right here that you can keep at the house. Alderman Sizomarsky, you want to make a comment?
Joe, don't use a friend and a fellow coworker. It's been an honor to work with you, to know you, and everything you've done for this city in organizing our parades. To reiterate what Alderman Wesley said, and on behalf of the VFW, the American Legion, and all the veterans of this world, and gentlemen like me that came after you, thank you for your service and all your contributions to this country. Thank you.
I moved my family from here, from Chicago out here in 1958, and moved to Wooddale in 1958. My two little children, two little girls, and I and my wife come out here, were strangers. And we lived in Wooddale, and Wooddale will always be my city, not Chicago, not Elmhurst. I'm living in Elmhurst right now, but Wooddale is my home. Wooddale will always be in my heart, and the dear Wooddale will always be my city. My city. Thank you.
You guys like to shake your hands?
Sure.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Ted. Does that Italian?
Right where you're up there. I thought you were right.
Peter.
Shake a body.
Could've added a vowel to the last part of your name.
And thank you.
This is for the study, there's two studies that SOC is going further with. The value is, the cost, I should say, is approximately $260,000. This is to design the runway rotation. And then the other one is to, once the all the, the new runway, the northern runway comes online, plus the one that just came online, the FAA has to do basically a study, they call it IRNAV, which designates which way the flights go. And we are going to push to take the lead on that and hopefully get the FAA to pay for some of this since they had to do the study anyways. But right, this evening, we're just looking for financial contribution for these studies.
I make a motion.
No.
Go ahead. I make the motion of $20,000.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Alderman Sizomarsky made the second. Alderman Messina, you had a question? Yes.
I just, I wanted to get better understanding of the deliverable, reading through that. So, I know at the end of February, they have to deliver something to us. Can you explain to the residents at home what that is?
Well, basically, this is after they did the first study that was done. They had the 20 points, which I believe we now have on the website, correct? And honestly, we've asked for some type of written communication from all Chicago CDA and haven't received it yet. Basically, those 20 points are talking about Fly Quiet. These, the CDA, actually, the ONCC has what they're looking at a rotational, I believe it's a weekly rotation. The experts are saying we could probably do better with a daily rotation. And anyways, two of the gentlemen that are on the team are former O'Hare FAA controllers. And they say, they make changes all the time. So, you could probably do daily rotations and it would improve the situation immensely. Again, they have to study all the facts and, and the ad hoc committee at the ONCC and, I don't know, Alderman Woods, did you make that last meeting, the ad hoc committee? We're basically, our team, basically, they're giving us a little time. In February, they're supposed to, and I'm not sure how much they're going to have at that time, but the full report won't be done, I believe, until the end of June unless...
End of June. End of June.
Unless something different? Okay. Yes, follow up then.
Can we make sure that they include the idea of there not being diagonals anymore in their study?
We can, we can mention that. Jeff, I don't recall. I don't recall, I think right now, they're using the diagonals, but once the diagonals go away, it's supposed to entail the new full build-out.
Right.
So, it's supposed to do that already.
Okay.
Correct? If I remember it, okay. And then the second one, the second study, which takes the IRNAV, which is technical, I guess they set the degree of which, which way the flights go off those runways. So, the FAA is supposed to do that and designate specific degrees, and that's why we want to take the lead so, and hopefully, we can get some money from the FAA to help pay for that because they're going to do the study anyways, but it'd be great if our people are doing the study and helping out there. All right? Something else? Go ahead.
I just want to make sure folks at home knows well that the idea of this is to bring relief to residents of Wooddale. I know Alderman Jacob and I and our Ward 1 is, we're very, very affected. So, this hopefully will give some direction to the FAA and CDA so that we can come up with a plan that'll bring some relief. So, your money's well spent, just so everybody at home knows and you folks in the audience. That's it.
And just so everybody, for the people listening at home, just so you understand, CDA was not going to do any type of rotation. They were going to do what they wanted to do. But because of the pressure, people putting on the CDA from both sides of the airport, they are definitely listening to the experts that we've hired. I mean, so, because they're looking at the entire project. Just Alderman Catalano? Yeah, I just want to say that we're all affected too, also in our ward, it's not just your ward. Right, right, right. Thank you. Alderman Sizomarsky?
Yeah. Not to sound non-sympathetic to the other wards, but I've lived in Ward 4, and our ward has been affected for the last, since Wooddale was around. Nobody's giving a crap about that. So, just so you know, just make sure Ward 4 is also involved in this whole thing, so...
Everybody, the experts are looking at the entire airport and...
We fought it for years and got nowhere. Now, all of a sudden, Ward 1, Ward 2, Ward 3, you know, want something done. Nobody cared about Ward 4 before, so...
Well, they did fight, the big fight, many years ago, but we lost. Real quick on the motion, do we have an amount, dollar amount on that? Okay, okay, just wanted to make sure. I thought I heard it, but, okay, a motion, a second, anything else? Roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Sizomarsky?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes. Just one quick comment. For all of those who came out to celebrate Mr. Butis, for all the great work he's done in town, if you would like to leave, we'll give you the opportunity to leave, or you can stay and listen to this great meeting. We've got a great agenda. Okay, go ahead.
Here we go.
Should've seen that in your packets.
Yes.
Mayor? Alderman Eugene Wesley?
I'll make the motion to donate $500 one time.
$500.
$500.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Jacob. Okay. Any questions on this? Roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Sizomarsky?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes. Next, city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple items. First and foremost, there's an item on the consent agenda for the street swooping contract. And I just wanted to tell the council last week, the committee, there was a request for the manpower analysis, and we have that in the packet coming out tomorrow. A breakdown of that for your information. Second, for those residents at home that couldn't make the shape of Wooddale Meeting, it is now playing on Channel 6 and 99 at 2:30 PM daily. And also, it's uploaded onto the internet on our YouTube channel as well, where you can watch it whenever you want. Also, the third item, I would defer to Police Chief Vesta for a report.
Go ahead, chief.
Thanks, Mr. Manager. There were some questions and an opportunity to provide just a very short, brief summary of what happened yesterday with our missing elderly couple. I'll try and keep it briefly, but I also want to highlight a program that the residents can take advantage of if we have another one of these situations. About 1:30 in the morning, we received a call of a missing elderly couple, and the family was aware that they had dementia. And they were missing for probably about 14 hours at that point, from, the family hadn't realized it at the time, but they had been missing that long. The midnight sergeant and the officers, kudos to them for jumping on it right away. They started putting out critical reaches and contacting area agencies through our Leeds terminals. And about 3:00 in the morning, we received contact from Cary Police that the couple had been seen at a Thornton's gas station up there, and they had spent about a half hour up there. So, that was good news, but it was also a lot of unknown circumstances of where they would've gone from then, from there. As you might be aware with dementia or Alzheimer's patients, a lot of times, these stories end up with someone that pulls off into an open field or, you know, maybe runs off the road and doesn't have the faculties to find help or call for help. This family, this couple, they didn't have any traceable means on them. Their vehicle wasn't traceable through newer technology, no cellphone. The family didn't believe they had a credit card. Just really, not a lot of means to trace them other than good old-fashioned police work and getting out and pounding the pavement. So, you know, for the next couple hours, a lot of time was spent by the entire shift contacting hospitals, anywhere between here and Cary and near around. Also hotels, because the officer indicated that they mentioned something about a hotel. You know, we were able to get a copy of the video, and they did not appear to be in any distress. So, nothing that would've, beyond them asking how to get to Wooddale, really alerted the officer that they were, you know, in trouble at that time. Mid-morning, probably about 7:15 or so, knowing the weather conditions, you know, it's, time was becoming of the essence, we decided to pull the trigger on a full-out media outreach on this that included all of our contacts that we have at all the major stations, and then also social media. What we've found in the past is, you know, as you know, social media can be used for some bad things, but we've been able to use it in a lot of our investigations for a lot of good. By starting to get the word out, as the day rolled on, and, you know, we continued to follow up with all the places we had checked before, all the forest preserves, all the agencies along the way, we started to get some tips that they had been seen in Crystal Lake or Fox Lake area. So, you know, we started to be stretched a little thin, and we also relied on many of those agencies throughout there to help us check certain areas. This thing really blossomed because of, we didn't know when we took the reporter, when we started the investigation, but the amount of lives that this couple had affected through founding the Cavaliers Drum of Bugle Corps. And this thing really went viral in the area, if you want to put a term on it. By late afternoon, we started receiving several more tips. And then the most promising was from a garbage truck driver who saw one of his friends had shared the post from our Facebook page. And he said, "I saw these people down at Irving and Western at Dunkin' Donuts." So, we started heading down there. In the meantime, we got another report that they had been seen there. We were able to find them on video, and this is a day and a half into them being missing. So, once we were able to see them on video as of 5 o'clock last night, kind of a little, little fist pump went through the room because we knew we were only a couple hours behind them at that point, and they were, they were alive at that point. Chicago PD, we reached out to them. They were very helpful in helping us flood the area and look for the couple. And as you may have heard on the news last night, as all the news stations were reporting, we got a call from Deerfield PD and an alert Deerfield officer. She had seen one of our critical reaches that had gone out and said, "That's got to be the car." And she, she stopped them, and obviously, we were thankful that, that they were found safe. So, I just want to thank all the agencies along the way that helped us, all the residents. We got a ton of tips. Our social media outreach yesterday reached over 200,000 people, which is really amazing for, you know, people sharing and getting the word out. And that was really one of the breaks that led us to the Chicago area. State Police, they helped us out by bringing out an airplane in the afternoon to help check the fields around Cary because, you know, time was of the, if they would've run out of gas in an open field, they probably wouldn't have survived very long. So, anyways, they're back home and safe, but it's a good opportunity to remind, if you're aware of anyone in town, we have what's called the SPAR program. It's a special for our at-risk residents. If you have family members or relatives that have dementia or Alzheimer's, what we do is we work with the family to keep a database of things that we might be able to trace them if they go missing. Obviously, a picture is one, but does their vehicle have any tracking capabilities? Do they have an iPass account that iDOT helped us with yesterday? They would've let us know if they would've hit any of the tollways. Cellphone numbers, credit card numbers, very important. The family wasn't aware of everything, and that one was used that we were able to find on a credit, credit report. So, we have one of those programs, so if any of you have, are aware of, or anyone at home knows someone that, you know, has Alzheimer's or dementia to a point that there's a chance they could go missing, we, we have a database, and it's a confidential database that we only use in the case that they do go missing. But that information can be really important, gathering ahead of time rather than trying to gather it after they're missing. So, anyways, thanks to everyone involved, and it was a nice, we kind of all felt like we found our grandparents, and it was, it was a nice finish to a very long day. So, thanks.
Thank you, chief. Thank you.
Can I say something?
Go ahead, Alderman Messina.
Chief, I, I sent you a quick email, but I just, again, you guys do some great work and great teamwork, so I want to definitely thank you. I mean, I, I kind of tried sharing it too, but I'm like, the police department, just the way it was going viral was crazy to see. So, kudos. We truly are very, very lucky. I work with police departments every day, and I am telling you, we are very, very, very lucky to have you and your team. So, thank you. Secondly, with SPAR, is that what it's called? Can we make sure that's under the senior citizens link that we just added on the website? That's pretty helpful.
Sure, we can make sure. And I will pass along the well wishes. You know, from the beginning this happened, our, our whole team was on it, and I'm very proud of the work that they do every day. And it's, it's nice to have good endings to these types of stories, so...
Thanks.
Alderman Sizomarsky, you're next.
Yeah, chief, just thanks for Wooddale also having that Facebook post. You know, people have friends and family all over this city and all over the state. You know, it's, it helps, I'm sure.
Yeah, and, you know, I, I've gone to some classes on it. We've, other people in the department have on how to use social media as a positive in these types of things. And man, it just, it really took off, and it was. It was a big reason why this, you know, we had optimism that they were so close and they were safe at that point and kept us, kept us going, so...
Alderman Ray Wesley, go ahead.
Adding on to the, what Alderman Randy said down there, could we put that in the newsletter too, about that program? Maybe twice a year?
Yeah, we'll, we'll refresh that and get that out. Another service that we do offer is for people that don't have relatives or family in the area. We make daily calls to seniors that, you know, have no other means of people really checking in on them. We only, we only have a few, and we've advertised that in the past, but if you're aware of anyone that might want that, our records personnel, Monday through Friday, call that up, and then on the weekends, the officers do it. So, it's kind of a, you know, we have a nice interaction with those people on a daily basis. And we've actually had one of those where we couldn't get through to them, and we went to there, and sure enough, they had fallen and were incapacitated on the floor, and we were able to get them to the hospital in safe recovery, so... So they're two good programs, and we'll refresh them in the newsletter again and get that out.
Could you give the names of both programs again?
It's the SPAR program, which is for at-risk residents, and then the, it's basically our senior daily call log is what we do, so. We'll, we'll get that in the city newsletter as soon as we can get into the next one and remind everyone of it, so.
Alderman Jacob?
Yeah, I just want to also thank the Police Department, and for all the communities' Police Departments. Too many times, unfortunately, in the last several months, we see nothing but negativity. It's great to see something positive, and to see how all the communities work together. And you, you have a great team, and our Police Department is definitely number one. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Catalano?
Yeah, I was just wondering, on the February, the 3rd Wednesday, the senior club meeting, maybe, yeah, in Salt Creek, maybe we can have one of the offices go there and, and explain to them what happened and the programs that we had, that'll be helpful.
Will do.
Yeah.
Are you talking about the senior?
Yeah.
Okay, the senior, not the salt, but the senior.
Okay. Well done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murmice, go ahead.
I'd just like to say, usually, my daily activities keep me on the run. I know when Chief Vesta first informed me of this early on in the process, I said, "Greg, I'm completely confident, you guys are going to make this happen, a couple will be found." This is very early on, I knew Greg and his department would do a good job, so I never got a chance to thank him. Thanks again, Greg. It's been a good week, so, thanks again. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Next, consent agenda, we have five items on the consent agenda. No objections, I need a motion.
Make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes. Next, entertain a motion to approve the items on the agenda. Item number one, approval of final payment request to Copenhagen Construction for the Elizabeth Court Pond Project in an amount not to exceed $28,705.14. Item number two, approval of squad replacement purchases from Roche Ford in the not-to-exceed amount of $52,588. Item number three, a resolution seeking to approve a contract between the City of Wood Dale and Christopher Burke Engineering for the Design and Construction Management of the Edgbrook Lift Station in the not-to-exceed amount of $92,720. Item number four, resolution seeking to approve a contract between the City of Wood Dale and Hoving Clean Sweep for Street Sweeping Services in a not-to-exceed amount of $60,000. And item number five, a resolution to approve an agreement between the City of Wood Dale and the owner for facade improvements at 396 West Irving Park Road, Crossroads Tavern in Edgery, in a not-to-exceed amount of $32,735.13. Do I have a motion?
I make the motion.
Second. Roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes. Committee Chairman reports planning and zoning.
I have two, Mayor.
Good, Alderman Catalano?
Yeah, the resolution overriding the execution of an annexation agreement for the property commonly known as 6 North 504 Central Avenue, Wood Dale, Illinois, and I'll make a motion to table that.
Second.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to table.
Yeah, right. Alderman Sizmarski, a second.
The next...
All in, all in favor?
Yeah.
Aye. Posed?
The next, an ordinance annexing property bearing the common address of 6 North 504 Central Avenue to the City of Wood Dale, Illinois, and I also want to make a motion to, to table that.
Second.
And that's tabled to February 18th meeting?
Correct.
At 7:30 PM. I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Both motions carried. That concludes your report?
Yes.
Thank you. Public Health and Safety?
No report.
Thank you. Public Works, Alderman Woods?
Regrettably, no report, Mayor.
We'll try and take care of that for you. Thank you. Finance and Administration, Alderman Jacob?
No report, Mayor.
Thank you. Under Other Business, Airport Noise, Alderman Jacob?
Couple of updates with the holidays and everything. We did, our O'Hare Noise Group didn't meet in December. We do, did recently post an article on our website, that only 11% of flights between 10:00 PM and 7:00 PM are cargo planes, which is a little bit different to what everybody would think. The October complaints for October 2015 was 21,000, or 26,582, that was 1,072 complainants. In November, it was 24,498, and that's 5,714 complainants. So thank you to the residents that are finally starting to get out there and complain, because that's what we really need to do, to be heard. Also, there is a petition online to save the diagonals. I urge all the residents to take a look at that and sign that petition. And finally, between January 1st and November 30th, the total Wood Dale complaints was That is my report.
Thank you. And under Stormwater, Alderman Jacob?
Uh, no report.
Approval of list of bills, January 21st, 2016, Alderman Jacob?
Make a motion to approve the list of bills for January 21st, 2016, for $855,599.51.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Any questions? Alderman Ray Wesley?
Page 13, Russo's Power Equipment Autocut, 434-19. What, what is it?
Mr. Ruben, do you have that? They're trying to get you on camera, that's what they're trying to do, put you on the spot.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that, please?
We haven't seen you for a while.
Go ahead, Mr. Wesley.
We're getting you something.
Can you repeat that?
Russo's Power Equipment Autocut, 434, page 13.
Not sure I can look in for that, for you tomorrow and get you an answer. Not sure what the bill's for.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Alderman Messina?
Two questions.
Go ahead.
Just to address questions from some of the residents, I got, Jeff, what's, what's the status of our consolidation? I know we mentioned it at the last meeting, Brad and I were working on consolidating a core list of items. We've had some residents ask about what those items look, look like. So I know I had asked for a list of that, so that I could get that to council, I know Brad's busy with the budget, but could we have a date that I could expect something to present to council?
Go ahead, Mr. Murmice.
Yeah, I talked with Mr. Wilson, what we decided on, would we, we would give a update by February 1 of the progress made to date with some of the things we had been talking about.
Okay.
And then also, at the February 1st date, we would also set a firmer timeline of when we would kind of finalize or continue the process, because we've got budget season now, so that's his priority, but we're thinking sometime in the, probably early, early spring of this year, to kind of take the next step. But February 1st, for the progress supportive of what we've done to date, the improvements we've made.
Okay. Go ahead, follow up.
Before my second question, there's going to be a plan to implement this, right, as far as the behavior change that we've talked about with staff?
Mr. Murmice?
Yes.
Okay. At that date, okay. Second question would be check number 83. Ken, maybe you can help us with that?
Who is it?
It's for Ramrod Distributors, plastic liner and towels.
Yes, again, this would be for the Public Works Facilities. I believe this was one of these items that we're still working on consolidating.
Okay. How many cases does this amount? $570 is a lot of cases of liners and paper towels, so can you help us understand?
Right, it's divided amongst three buildings, so you have your Public Works Facility, the water facility, and then the wastewater plant. So they actually do get used quite a lot, there are a lot, a lot of garbage bags, as well as, these garbage bags are used at the train station and at City Hall.
You have a follow-up, Alderman?
And, and how long would this last, this for?
This usually lasts us typically a couple of months, you know, four to six months.
Follow up?
No.
Okay.
Waste of money.
Any other questions? No other questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano?